What I normally do, Tony usually handles this and he's much better at it than I am.
We got seated, Ryan. Okay, this is the October 24th zoning board of appeals meeting started at 7:10. With us tonight is Corey Whitehouse.
Whiteside.
Whiteside, I'm sorry. I'm no good at names, Tony. Corey never happened.
That's alright.
Christine Mizada. Mike.
Simonetta.
You got it right this time. You got it? Yeah, because I read it. And joining us also tonight is Ryan Zelik. I'd like to call it to or this meeting to orders, public hearing. First on the agenda is ZBA 2024, 2024 12, 30 Robbins Road, map 14-2, block 69, lot 8. Alexa S. Vento is requesting a variance for a side yard setback of two feet for a one car garage when five feet is required for detached accessory structures, 12 feet or more away from the principal structure per zoning regulation. VA 10 in zone R15. Speaking for the application. Come up, sign in and. Do you want to ever sign in first? Oh, it's up there. Okay.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. Go ahead.
I don't know, maybe I was just going to read the letter I submitted. Okay. I just wanted to say thank you for having me to the zoning board of Berlin. I'm presenting this variance because I would like to add a single car fabricated garage to our home, measuring 12 feet wide, 24 feet long, and 10 feet and 10 inches in height. We would like the opportunity to keep our vehicle safe from any natural environmental elements and in the rare but unfortunate event of theft. We're proposing two variances. Option one is a variance reduction on the side yard is proposing to have a reduced side yard setback of five feet to two feet, bringing the accessory structure 12 feet away from the home. The option two that we're presenting is a variance reduction between the structure, accessory structure and the principal structure, which is the home. We're proposing that the accessory to have a reduced side yard setback of five feet, bringing the accessory nine feet away from the home. We are, we're asking to please consider that the property is a non-conforming lot as to minimum frontage falling in zone R15, where we should have a frontage width of 100 feet. The property has a width of 75 feet, losing that additional 12 and a half feet on both sides is why we're asking the board to consider options one and two, which will allow us to install the single car garage. Furthermore, there is a fence separating the two lots in which we believe the garage wouldn't impose an encroachment on the neighbor's land. In fact, the garage would provide an additional layer of privacy in favor of the neighbor residing at 36 Robbins Road as we will no longer see their backyard living area from the kitchen window. I thank you for the opportunity to appear before the board for a chance to propose this variance request. I appreciate your time and consideration in this matter.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for?
She's recusing herself.
Yeah. I speak at all? No one wants to hear what she says.
Okay. So with that recusal, it's going to require a vote of four, all four of us to give you a positive on your, on your request. Is there any?
Accessory structure, so many feet from the primary structure. What is, what is the purpose for that?
Christine, could you put your microphone on? To turn it on? Yeah.
And press the button.
So I guess my question is, what, what is the purpose of keeping the build, the structure, the accessory structure so many feet from the primary structure?
There is no requirement to have it a certain distance away. Just if you have it 12 feet or more, you get a reduced setback for the side and rear yards. You can have it as close as far away as you want in your lot of space.
Right.
Is the issue the has this changed? Is it about the, the property line or is it about the structure to the house? What?
I well, option one is asking, it's more for the property line. I'm asking for a five foot, from a five foot to a two foot reduction from the property line.
Accessory structure closer to your home and further from the property line.
Keeping the accessory closer to the property line and 12 feet away from the home.
What's option two?
Option two would be five feet away from the property line and then closer to the print, to the home, which would make it nine feet from the, to the home.
And this only requires 12 feet from the home for none?
No, so she only has about 26 feet to work with here. The 12 feet width of the garage leaves her with 14 feet. Initially, she's proposing to have it 12 feet away from the house. I mean, if she puts it less than 12 feet, she won't meet that normal setback of 10 feet here. The 10 or 15. Exactly. So I think the other option is to reduce that, reduce the distance to allow her a short, a smaller setback from the 12 feet to
Nine.
Nine feet. Yeah. So that would give her, I would leave her five feet away from the property line.
Which is required?
Which would, would be required if she's 12 feet away. So she's asking to reduce the 12 feet to a nine, the second option, rather than have it from three to, from five to two feet. That, that leaves her with five feet away from the property line rather than
I'm confused because I thought that 10, 10 was required.
Five is required according to the application.
So if you have, if you've got nine feet from the, the house, the main dwelling, the, the five feet left on the property line is not actually your, a variance from the requirement.
Exactly. So she's going to ask, she was asking for, in order to have, for her to meet the five feet and not be 12 feet away, to have a reduction of the 12 feet as she would need to reach five. It's confusing.
Yeah, this is really.
More than five feet away. Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's why she's asking, instead of allowing her to have the five foot reduction by meeting 12 feet, she wants to meet it nine feet. No other option for her to meet it. She doesn't go.
But more importantly, it comes down to the property line. I mean, at the end of the day, do you, does the neighbor want the garage? That's two feet.
Let me ask this, what is the reasoning for the 12 feet? Is that?
Well, that just gives you the, the structure a certain distance away from the house. You could reduce setbacks. The five feet would be, she would have been compliant if she had more than 12 feet away from the house, if she was five feet away. In this scenario, the second option, if she's five feet away, she's only nine feet away from the home.
Okay.
Asking to have the 12 feet reduced nine feet in the second option, as opposed to just, I mean, the five foot reduced to two feet, meet that.
Okay, I understand.
And it's because since it's a detached garage, it has to have that.
Yes.
If it was.
In order to have that reduced setback, it has to be detached. Yes.
Gotcha.
If you attach.
We wouldn't be talking. She'd be 14 feet away from, 13 feet away from that.
Right. I mean, couldn't you just put like a, a breezeway roof to make it a attached garage and call it a day?
I think it has to be closed breezeway.
Well, I mean, you're only putting it on a slab. A garage is only ever on a slab. It's not on any type of foundation. I mean, no, breezeway doesn't have to be either because that doesn't require a basement of any sorts.
So it would have to be 10 feet away is the regular setback for principal structure. So if it was attached, it would have to be 10 feet away the side yard line.
Okay, I get that. Okay.
Oh, if it's attached, it's got to be 10 feet away from the property line? Oh, okay.
Okay, I
Do we have the two different drawings?
Yep.
I don't have it, to be honest with you. I had it.
It was, it was mailed, emailed.
I can give you the ones that I have now.
I know exactly where it is. At 2 o'clock this afternoon, I called out of my shop and went after it.
And I can, I can print it. I'm going to give it to you. Want to see it? Because I can, I can print it.
Yeah, I, well, I can look at my phone. I printed it when I was at my business today and when I got called for the fire department, it's sitting in the printer. Does anybody have any other questions?
Well, I don't know if the Moroses, the 36 Robbins Road owners are there today to speak on their own behalf, but
They are.
Okay. I certainly would like to hear from them, but yeah, this is the schematic that I wanted to see what's up on the screen now.
That's where I was going to go next to see if anybody else had to speak, wanted to speak.
Yeah, no, I was just curious. So again, the, there will be no side yard variance required if the variance for the nine feet is granted. And, and the neighbor's strong letter statement is really dealing with the side yard issue.
I believe that is correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
What is, can I ask, what is the issue?
He was just questioning.
I don't have an issue. I'm, I'm clarifying. I'm, I guess I'm kind of just speaking out loud. I don't have a specific question. I'm just
We wanted more details to find out if some, if somebody was going to here speak for your neighbors and
Oh.
So that would be the next part of the, the meeting here. So if you have nothing else and we have no
Yeah, I, I think I'm good.
We can move on to the next part of the meeting. And if you have anybody here to speak for the addition?
Yeah, there, what are the questions or concerns?
Speak for or against? Okay. Come up, sign in and speak and
You can see?
Yep. You can come out, you can come up after if you want to. Say your name and address for the record.
My name is Kyle Morris. I'm at 36 Robbins Road. So there's a couple of issues with this. Our, our main issue, and this is with talking to our insurance company, is the fire hazard risk of prefab garages. And having the two feet is, I mean, I'd object to any variance that adds the closer to our property. If five feet is, I thought it was 10 feet was the very
It was attached. If it was an attached garage, it would be 10 feet. But detached,
12 feet away.
Yeah.
Detached, detached, it has to be, supposed to be 12 feet and five feet from the property line, but
Yeah, so the
The closer to her house is not.
At the two feet, I would absolutely object to a variance for that based on, it would, it would put the structure 11 feet from our house, which is closer to our house than her house. And with the, I can submit an insurance letter too, if I could. Yeah, no problem. I have quite a few copies if you need more.
Yeah, I'd like to see a copy.
Absolutely.
Pass a couple down.
They're just stating there's with fire risks now. I mean, so that's a huge issue in older houses. Insuring older houses is, is an issue even with renewing your policies, that sort of stuff and dealing with insurance companies is never a fun time. If they have any reason to deny a claim at all, I think they're going to. So yeah, any, any variance on our side, I would, I would object to. This is from our insurance company stating that is also not a great idea. Secondly, is the map itself and the placement of the garage. I believe the map, the numbers are incorrect because when you do go to measure from the front of the property line to the end of the driveway, there are 73 feet on this map that was submitted where the driveway itself is 93 feet. So you're missing some feet there and I'm not exactly clear where this garage is supposed to be going. We brought this up a few times and there was never any additional map submitted or correct numbers submitted on that map. That's my second concern there.
Could this
I can just
Could be something with the
Yeah, so that's right extra feet at the end of the driveway isn't actually her property. That's the town right of way.
So
So this, what the surveyor does here is they begin at
A sidewalk?
Property line. There's no sidewalk here, but
Oh, there isn't. Okay, gotcha.
It would be a space after the sidewalk where you'll see utility pole. Usually that's where the right of way ends.
Would it be 20 feet?
In some cases it can be.
Up to 20, my, my house is 25.
Yeah.
Robbins Road kind of gets wider in that portion when it curves and, you know.
I just want to clarify a show on that because whatever doesn't add up to what Dean, so we weren't sure where you were putting the garage itself.
Just for verification to Corey and Ryan, this insurance letter says proximity raises significant concerns regarding fire risk and overall safety to affected properties. Today's insurance market, many companies are increasingly hesitant to provide coverage of properties where neighboring structures are closer than 20 feet, 20 feet. This design, this is designed to mitigate the risk of fire spreading as well as other hazards. That's the justice letter.
They don't park in prefab garages in New York City though, with wood floors?
20, 20 feet was cited and I hear the owner talking about 11 feet if there was a two feet variance. So that's nine feet that he's got between his structure and the lot line and even with a five foot compliance here, he would still only have 14 feet.
Yeah, well, that's what the insurance is saying now, but if the house is built that way, it's a different, different story. It's, it's still within our legal because we have a five foot setback on the property. It's within our purview to make that available because that is, that would be legal to our zoning.
Yeah, right. Though that, that's compliant to the zone.
Yeah, compliant to our zoning.
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me. Do we have any more questions for Mr. Moros? Is that what it is? Moros?
Moros.
Moros. Well, here.
Can I get that for you?
Huh?
Can I get that for you?
Yeah, my concern is just the fire risk and how close it is to the property.
Okay. Yes, you may.
Thank you for the concern. I'm just a little curious as to why that is a concern because on the property, on their property, there is an accessory structure that's already five, six feet away from my property, from that property fence line. It is not as large as a prefab car garage, but it is a shed. I did provide an overhead bird's eye view picture. Yeah, you can actually see it from from that photo, but you can actually get a better visual of it with the photo that I provided. I think it's on the first on the document, on the first page. Excuse me. Yes, right there. So if you see that, that's, you see where the driveway ends? I would like to add, we are proposing to add the one car garage in front of the driveway. And then there's the fence and then on the other side of the fence, there is in fact a shed at 36 Robbins Road.
Whose fence is that?
It appears to be, yeah.
So when you guys did that fence, did they do the six inches beyond the property line, et cetera? On the measuring tape, it's impossible to know how close that is and where the property line actually sits.
Well, it's all, it's all close.
Well, she's bringing it up as one to the other, but theirs is right five, six feet away as well.
Yes.
Resolution does that create? We're not going to ask them to take their
Right, they can't do that.
I know that part. It's six feet from the fence and there's six inches from the fence to property line. But also a parked car inside, a wooden floor garage, that's 11 feet from our house. That's our concern.
I can't hear whoever's talking. You're going to have to come back up and speak into the mic. You can come up and share with her if you'd like, if you can.
Yes, the, the shed itself is at six feet from the property line, then there's six inches to, from the fence of the property line, six feet from shed to the fence. However, the prefab garage is, I mean, it's, it's a fire hazard parking a car inside of those. That's, that's the concern and that shed would be 11 feet from our house at a two foot variance. That's the concern. That's incredibly close. That's closer to our house than it would be to her house. I, that's going to be an issue for insurance in the future if we ever could get a new policy, a new plan. I would object, object to any variance that is adding distance on our side. I think it's a very reasonable request.
Do you have any lawnmowers or gas in your shed?
I don't. Lawnmower's in the garage. I feel like lawnmower's outside. There's, there's nothing gasoline in there. I'm against anything that moves it towards our house.
But at five feet, that's compliant.
If, if it is, and you guys approve it, as far as if that's within your regulations, then that's
I would only be complying with the variance to reduce the
Yeah, and to reverse the 12 feet. But that's reducing on her side, not his.
Right.
And this is a prefab, you said, with the wooden floor?
How they would perform the installation is they would dig four to six inches of the ground. They would put rock underneath, pat it down, and then they would install the prefab garage onto that platform that they create.
Well, it's not, it's not going to be on a slab. It's going to be on
Yeah, the garage is wood and it's, gravel's underneath, so it stays stable. It's, it stays stable.
Shed is what it is.
Yeah, it's a glorified shed.
It's a shed with a garage door.
Because then if you put a slab, you might as well just attach it to the house at that point. Put a breezeway.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against? Neutral. Okay, would you like to come up, sign your name? Let me say while we, while we're doing this is that anything we say or anything that's said during this part of the, the the meeting would have to be, it, it, it ends here. As soon as we go into executive session, it, you can't add any new information. All information has to be done while we're in
My name is Joseph Porcaro. I reside at 22 Robbins Road and I immediately abut Perkins Home. I am completely neutral. My sole and only purpose speaking to the board is to ensure that you have complete and accurate information. As Tyler at 36 Robbins Road mentioned, there is mentions that are incorrect on the drawing. If you look at the drawing, if you could put it up on the screen, please. Go on to the left side, you see 53 feet. You see 20, this is the north, south directions, 53 feet, you see 24 feet for the garage and 73 feet. Well, if you add those three dimensions, they do not equal 250 feet. 250 is the northerly and the southerly distance between
The maps we have here has been corrected to 153 feet.
Right, so that, that is taken care of. I did not have that.
Right. I'll speak to a discrepancy or confusion.
My other comment is all the discussions are related to east-west dimensions. We need, I'm requesting that the board also look at north-south dimensions. For example, 73 feet is not the end of the existing asphalt pavement for the driveway. The end of the asphalt pavement is 93 feet. Now, if you were to position the garage at 73 feet, the wall of the garage is directly opposite a window in the third, in the residence at 36 Robbins Road. In other words, In the third, in the residence at thirty-six Robbins Road. In other words, they would look out the window and see the wall of the garage. So the question is. And this is completely neutral. Is the end, is the garage positioned? At the end of the existing asphalt pavement for the driveway, or is it positioned twenty feet? To the north. And seventy-three feet. And that's, that's significant. The other thing that I would like for to request is that. This map was prepared years ago. When. The owner of thirty Robbins Road purchased the home. This map does not show the stockade fence. Does not show the outline of the. Residents at thirty-six Robbins Road. And. I am at. Quandary of where. Garage is actually going to be positioned. Is it seventy-three feet or is it ninety-three feet? It has a significance because if it's ninety-three feet. Garage is pretty much opposite the stockade fence. If it's at seventy-three feet. The garage is pretty much opposite. Residence at thirty-six Robbins Road. The big difference. Between the, that twenty feet makes a significant.
We'll let, we'll let our zoning officer address that for you.
So those are my comments.
Thank you.
Completely neutral.
Thank you.
I'll mention again earlier. The. Surveyor's map here does not outline. The public town right of way. Where the driveway ends isn't the end of her property. The property ends where the surveyor certified here. When she proposed the structure, she drew it in with the engineer's scale. And we always measure and make sure it's accurate after that, and. That's, that is seventy-five or seventy-three feet from the garage, the property line here. For the rear of the property, she just made a mistake with the fifty-three feet. She thought. That was the end of the property line. Do you see these two wave-like lines here? That indicates that the property continues further back, so they. They didn't pay for the whole survey. Maybe they got lazy and did half of it. It's mostly wooded back there, so I can see why they hadn't done that. But the only way to go against. Surveyor's map is to have someone else hire someone to. Verify whether or not these are accurate. Once they stamp this, we have no other. Objection but to confirm it's accurate if we find all the measurements to be. As they are. But they indicated here to two hundred and fifty feet on that. Western sideline. They did indicate that the property continues further with that other symbol here. Just the fifty-three feet was incorrectly written. And. Would you write one hundred and forty feet on the other one?
One fifty-three on this one.
Fifty, okay.
Any other questions?
I, I do have a question. I'm just really curious as to what are the statistics of fires of. Cars catching on fires in garages? I don't know if we. Could find this out, if this is going to be important. For the decision. I I don't know what. Chances are of that making place.
I don't know if it's anything that we could find particularly. I I think you you would have to check. With insurance companies and 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 things like that. I know that information wouldn't be available for us even from a fire department's aspect. You know, if if. Yeah, I mean, you're putting a prefabricated. Building up, that would be one of the things that I would. Recommend you check if that's a concern of yours to begin with.
Yeah, especially with the homeowner's insurance, because if all of a sudden. Now, we change. The variance to appease the neighbor by not putting a garage two feet from the property line, because I know if I was a neighbor. And someone was putting something. Two feet, this is two feet. Next to my line of sight, if there was fence or no fence, and I'm cutting the grass and I see a garage, two feet. I would raise a concern too. The other flip side to it would be what your insurance, your homeowner's insurance would say, hey, you have a garage structure. That's nine feet to the house. We're dropping you. Because insurance companies now, if I had to send pictures of a latch. To a gate to my patio because they dropped us, and I said, I've had a latch. For a year and a half, because you looked at a Google map, doesn't show the latch. They dropped us, and I've had nationwide for thirty-something years. For a latch, so that would be the flip side to it. I see their concern, but then you need to check your insurance company, because if all of a sudden they're like. You've got a a car garage nine feet from your house? We don't want you because it's not about the statistics of how many cars catch on fire in garages. All it takes is one. I mean, look at the fire over here. They can't even put it out. They can't even get a helicopter to to dump water in Silver Lake. It's a stone's throw away from it. So like, to me, it's just like, if it's one out of a thousand or two out of a thousand. One is way too many to begin with, and let's face facts. If it's an electric car or if it's a gasoline car. The chances of them catching on fire. Are are pretty good, because all you got to do is drive on a highway. Anywhere in the state, and there was a car fire at some point within the week, because you can see it on the side of the road, and that was a driving car, never mind a sitting car.
I can, I can professionally speak to that. I I own an auto repair business, and I've seen cars start on fire. While sitting in our garage, our, our, in our driveway. They were towed in. And literally, so you have to be, you you have to be careful. And all we're trying to do is. We're trying to give you the facts that we have. And that we're hearing on our side of it, so. It's.
And I think we want to be fair for both sides too. We want to make sure that the neighbor's not pissed. We want to make sure that. You you got a garage which is, you know. Completely understandable and. But at the same time. Rules and laws are set into place for. Maybe not specific reasons, but they're there. And fortunately, we have to abide by them. And. Got to take everybody into consideration.
Now, I have a question for you. Because this is a fab prefab garage. Does. What is the. Are there any zoning rules? Or or ordinance against the prefab?
Oh, the style of structure? No.
Okay, because it's basically a shed.
Yeah. And because it's not uncut, it's wood.
Well, I just wanted to know if there was any variant, any issues because it was.
Yeah, like the last time we were talking about garage door makes it makes a difference if you close the garage door. There's no garage door. It's not a garage anymore.
Yeah.
And this is just, it's clutter farms. It's, they build everything the same way over, well. They build it in Pennsylvania and bring it over here.
Well, they will, well. Anyway, are there any other questions? Yes, sir. You're gonna have to come back up here to the mic.
This is Joe Porcaro again. Perhaps I missed it, but could you clarify definitively for me? Is the. Fourth face of the garage seventy-three feet? From the northern property line or is it ninety-three feet?
It'll be seventy-three feet from the engineer's property line. This town of Berlin has a twenty-foot right-of-way.
Even fifty feet shown on the drawing is the complete. Distance between the northerly property line and the southerly property line, because I have the same.
But.
My property.
For this type of drawing, they usually do not include. The the town's right-of-way. Or state right-of-way, so twenty feet.
The curb in the street, it's ninety, seventy-three plus twenty.
No, yes.
Ninety-three.
Yeah, ninety-three.
Which is the end of the existing asphalt.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay. You're all set, Mr. Porcaro? Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? One more. Come on up, sign yourself in and. Say your name and address, please.
My name is Michelle Fisher-Paul. I reside at forty-five Robbins Road. And I was wondering, could you pull up the picture, the aerial view of the fence with the shed? Thank you. The one that.
The one that showed the fence.
It it showed the fence and then the the neighbors, the neighbor's shed at thirty-six, sorry. Yes. So. My concern would be that if the. The structure, the prefab structure is going at the end of the driveway, the corner of that structure is going to be very close to the corner of their house. So should there be a fire, that fire would travel. Into our neighbor's home. You see what I mean?
How far off the driveway is it supposed to be set, Paul? No, off the asphalt. Obviously, they're going to put it on the grass.
Well, I'm not sure if the asphalt is exactly. At the property line or more so, but. The placement here of the garage, I think it actually goes. A little bit off of that, yeah, so it wouldn't be exactly in line with the asphalt.
So would it be closer to the neighbor's home?
Oh, it would be.
Further away.
There'll be a portion of the asphalt sticking out. That's not in line with the.
Okay. So if I were the neighbor, I would be concerned for fire, and I personally am am objected to any kind of variance, putting a structure. That could potentially catch on fire. For whatever reason. That close to a home. Because as you know, with the fire that's on the mountain today, you know, it it just takes a small gust of wind to bring the flames over to another structure and with the shed. And the other things in the neighbor's yard, it could certainly be a very big hazard. Thank you.
Any questions?
I've got one more, just because the math is just. So Paul. If the garage is five feet off the property line. Which technically would be five and a half, because it's it's it. If the fence is six inches closer, the property line. Is not the fence, it's off the fence. Six inches, so it would be. Five feet, six inches instead of five feet, because the. If the surveyor is marking. The fence is the property line, and the neighbor stating they built the fence six inches off the property line. I mean, does that make any much of a difference? Now we're five feet, six inches away.
Yeah, but it's still five feet from their property line.
Well, wouldn't it have to be off?
Oh, they wouldn't measure from the fence.
Okay.
It's possible.
Well, I mean.
Might have not been there. The map was done in eighty-three. I'm not, we're not sure if the fence was there at that time.
Oh, so that, oh. Jesus, that probably should be re. Yeah, no doubt. So then that. Shouldn't that be re-surveyed then?
I mean, you could do it if someone. Have to pay for it.
Well, I mean. Obviously, we've got two people that are concerned over fires. And something, you know, right up in their face. You know, we have a person who wants a garage to to put their their vehicle in, which, you know, listen, everybody here has a reasonable request. But it then becomes a matter of like, if we're going off a map from nineteen eighty-three. Shouldn't that be re-surveyed?
Oh, so it's, the map is accurate when they stamp it and seal it. They certify that all the measurements are correct. If there was another structure in there in between that we weren't aware of. Then we'll, we'll have them do an A two survey to verify the locations.
But I mean, when the driveway was put in.
Yeah, we don't.
That's, that's a new driveway. Is it on the property line? Is it? I mean.
For driveways, they don't.
Right, but what I'm just saying, though, that's a newer driveway.
Yeah, the challenge this one.
Okay, well, that, I'm, I'm.
Even if we're in a weird.
I'm speaking out loud. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I, we had the property surveyed when we moved in and we built the fence, so we did have a recent survey done within, we moved in fourteen years ago. So it's, it's been surveyed. The fence was lined exactly six inches in. It's, we have a newer survey.
Okay.
Also, one last thing about the insurance, so. I could just speak to our, what our insurance company had told us. Basically, there's a lot of issues now with insurance, tons of costs that go into it with new roofs, all that sort of stuff, different claims that are very costly for insurance companies. And basically what they're saying is any house that's built after nineteen eighty is posing issues for. Either renewals or getting new policies, all that sort of stuff. So anything that's within twenty feet of. Our house is is my concern. This is just strictly from our insurance company, from a broker who deals with lots of different insurance companies. We use a broker. They're very knowledgeable on this stuff, so that's where, that's where my concerns come from. My concerns are if there's issues with, you know, a new structure there, we go for a renewal, new insurance policy, whatever it may be. Having an issue in the future, so that's. I stance on that. If there's a way to keep it twenty feet from our house and you get your variance. Closer to your house, that's, that's. Possibility. But I I would, I would object to any variance that adds it closer to our property.
Uh, Paul, on option two, what's the distance between garage to their structure?
Uh, be three feet difference. And you said eleven feet currently? So that would be fourteen feet. I mean.
They're eleven feet from the property line, is that what you said?
Oh, he said if if.
No, like if 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 they're five feet, I'm just trying to, I'm I'm trying to figure out like from the corner of their house to where the garage is going to be.
It's, it's pretty much eleven feet, seven inches. From, from the corner of our house, exactly right there to the corner of that driveway.
Okay.
That's where. That number is, and before with the seventy-three feet, having the confusion, so that if it was actually on the driveway itself right there, that's eleven feet.
So then, if if it's five feet from the fence. Doesn't the driveway have to be bigger now at that point since it's?
Yes. The, we would have to. Widen the end of the asphalt driveway with gravel. If we're moving it an additional five feet away from. Fence line, that would bring it sixteen feet away from the principal structure of the neighbor's home.
Okay, thank you. One last time, is there any other questions or comments? Can I have a motion to close this portion of the hearing?
I make a motion.
Ryan will second that.
Ryan's Zalik second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on. Next up. ZBA twenty-four seventeen. Five seventy-eight Berlin Turnpike, Mac, map ten dash four, block eighty-three C, lot fifty-two.
Six fifty-eight Berlin Turnpike.
Okay, I'm sorry, six fifty-eight Berlin Turnpike. John Gomez Cargis Automotive LLC is requesting a variance. Is requesting a variance to the side yard of ten feet where fifty feet is required. When abutting residential. District per Berlin zoning. VI dot J dot four of the. Of the Berlin town zoning, what is that, business BT zone?
BT one zone.
BT one zone. Property is owned by Ceci Salatina.
Viveras.
Viverios. Speaking for the motion. Is anybody here to speak for the motion?
They know to come back?
Yes, they did.
They did.
One more time, is there anybody here to speak for the motion?
This was continued from last month, right?
Yep, this motion was continued from this last month. So we make a motion to deny, right?
I mean, you can make any motion you like.
That's the way it goes. That's what we've done in the past.
Weren't they supposed to come to see you to come up with a different?
I'll speak to that. They, they did come to the office next day or Monday after. We discussed plans, different options that they can go through and were to come back with a plan. Yeah, I haven't heard from them since.
Well, they can reapply.
Can they?
No, they can't.
Not for the same variance, you, it's a six month period then.
Yeah, then they have to.
Can't just sit on our agenda forever, though.
No, I, I'm, I'm.
Well, you also, once you open it, you have thirty five days to close, unless they extra extension.
We have thirty five days to close?
Close the public hearing, yes.
I have a second.
A second.
Ryan Zalek, second. Any questions?
Corey.
Corey, you have any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 unanimous, motion denied.
No, you.
Close the meeting.
Close the meeting, wasn't it?
Close the hearing.
Got one more.
See, ZBA twenty twenty four dash eighteen, twenty four, twenty four dash nineteen and twenty twenty four dash twenty. Forty six Woodland Road, map twelve. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm exhausted right now.
Ten two.
Dash ten dash two, block eighty three, lot seventeen A, Casimir Perzan. Represented by.
Mariana.
Mariana. Pal, Pilek. Okay, I'm sorry, it's for request variance for one side yard variance of twenty feet, two inches for an additional commercial storage, storage room two. Storage room two. A rear yard setback of eight feet for an additional, for addition of a commercial storage room. And three, the maximum building of twenty six point four percent for the addition on a commercial storage, storage room when twenty five feet is required for the side yard, fifty feet is required for the rear yard and twenty five percent is the maximum permitted building coverage per town zoning regulations. VIJ in the.
BT one.
BT one zone, speaking for the application.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Town of Berlin. Zoning Board of Appeals and fellow residents. My name is Mariana Pilipov. I'm here to present Grace Machine Company LLC and the founder, Kasimir Perzan. And we are tonight respectfully asking for reviewing of the variances requested, just the ones that were just read from the memo. Specifically, a side yard setback of twenty point two feet, a rear yard setback of eight feet and a maximum building coverage of twenty six point four percent. Grace Machine Company is located at forty six Woodland Road, the BT one zone. And just to give you a little bit of a background on the company, the founder came in the nineteen eighty from Poland and he met his beautiful wife. Story short, she had, she got pregnant, they had beautiful kids and to support the growing family, the founder was working two jobs, but it was still not enough. So he bought his first machine in nineteen eighty one and started his small production, but because of his hard work, dedication and talent, the company grew. And in nineteen ninety six, he bought the building where the company is currently located. So he's been in that building for close to thirty years at this point. And unfortunately, because of all the hard work and the years that was put in, the owner had a heart attack. And his oldest daughter, Annette, came down from Washington DC where she just graduated with MBA at that time to help the father grow the family business. And actually, with her leadership, Grace Machine Company became the smallest manufacturer, women owned manufacturer in the globe, we're told right now, to win the US government, to receive the vendor number from the US government. So they are now catering directly to the Department of, Department of Defense orders. And so what it created for Grace Machine is a unique opportunity, but at the same time a problem, because the type of the contracts they get are long term and they have to sign on to produce a large quantity. But the clients are only picking up small quantities at a time and the rest has to be stored. So we brought here an example just to show, this is one box of three pieces, but the in stacker, two fifty nine pieces. So everything, three pieces are being picked up by the client, but the rest has to be stored in his storage facility. We also made pictures that we are happy to share. Um, so we, is it? Yeah, same photos I've shared to you, thank you. Um, just if some folks are remote. So currently, approximately half of the shop is a storage facility and the other half is machines. If we are allowed these variances, we can build an additional storage in the back and move this storage room to the new addition and expand the machines on the floor, which will increase the efficiency and increase production. And we just wanted. We just wanted to say that for Grace Machine Company, it's a huge honor to be in Berlin and to cater to the US Department of Defense. And we believe that if we approved these variances, we could continue to be a proud member of community and support local jobs and continue to do what has been done before successfully and just keep on growing.
Oh, yeah.
So that's.
That's too funny.
I think it's kind of deterred from what we're actually doing.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
For me, that definitely was.
So let's just approve it and we. Thank you. So.
He's looking for a.
They want to make ice cream.
I, we can make ice cream as long as there is space for that, too.
It's clean enough in there.
Yeah, seriously.
They're looking for a side yard setback of twenty point two where twenty five is required. Rear yard where of eight feet where fifty is required. And you're already over that anyway, aren't you?
Correct, yep.
Yeah, and they're looking for the, the size of the addition can only be twenty five percent more and they're looking for twenty six point four percent.
Yeah, we do want to point out that there is a small storage already. So basically, we're just extending that small piece. You know, it's, was pointed out, it's already at those dimensions. We just want to make it in line with the rest of the building.
And this is gonna be a thirty foot addition by ninety seven feet.
I look.
Twenty two, twenty.
Twenty two.
Twenty two by ninety seven. Thirty feet to the back.
There's just woods. It's just woods and our plan is to make the addition in the same style color so that it's gonna be, you know, overall.
Blending.
Blending, looking nice, but also in the back, there is no other building or anything like that. It's just woods.
Like that water tower is back there.
Yeah, the town owns property at the Berlin Turnpike facing side of that property. I think there is in a housing application in P and Z right now. It's a little.
Yes. There's also wetlands back there, too, that they're.
Yeah, but they're not on.
They're pretty, they're closer to the turnpikes.
Yeah.
Correct, the pictures of the wooden shelves showing all the packages like this and other parts, so. Sorry, those I cannot leave with you. They have to go back to the client. But some of the parts are small like this and it could be five thousand of those and they could be as large as this and it could be another thousand, but they're only picking up very small quantities. So we also brought, I mean, I can pass it around, but that one I will have to take back, is the distribution schedule where it's twenty parts one month and nothing for the next eight months. And then they come and pick up thirty more because the client, that's how the client wants it, unfortunately. It's not something that, you know, we like to do purposely, it's just the nature of the business.
Then you have a contract for this.
Yes, for all of it, yep. And it's, it's always been a problem, hence why the storage has been built inside the shop. But in order to grow and because of the recently won Department of Defense jobs, there's just, it's gonna become very problematic.
Well, the. That's a good question.
What was the question?
What is the hardship?
So without these variances approved, we would not be able to continue doing business and providing jobs to local, you know, local members of community. And I guess we're gonna have an additional person hoping to speak.
Any questions?
Could we have an additional?
Yes, well, that would be next. Anybody else speaking for the petition? Please come up and sign your name and.
My name is Robert Rainin.
Speak up, please.
My name is Robert Rainin and I also represent Grace Machine together with Mariana. There was a question about hardship. So I, we brought a few pieces just to show you what they do. So for example, this apart is maybe does not look complicated, but it's very complicated. The setup time to set up machine to build one of those is ten hours. The margins, the profit margins on this part are not that substantial. So what is happening, Grace Machine has to must produce those items, even though the man is only, they buy only a few pieces during month, for a month. Like Mariana said, sometimes they may order three pieces, like in this case, sometimes may order twenty pieces and there may be, maybe two months or three months when there is no more orders. So Grace Machine, if they would set up the machines only to produce three pieces, the cost of this item would go substantially higher. It has, he sits right there. He's, he put his life into this business and which any business owner does, right? But what is happening, he got to the point where he was able to secure a vendor number from US government, the Department of Defense, so he's able to produce. US government told, told him that he is the smallest business manufacturing shop on the globe that was awarded vendor number. So it's huge honor for him, took probably over six years to get there. And it's also very, I would say, a huge honor for the town of Berlin that such a business exists in Berlin and not in New York or other towns, right, in the US. And so what he does, he needs to, the hardship is that if he doesn't must produce those items and he may sell them years from now, you know, but he, he, the pictures of the storage show that everything is so well organized. It almost looks like a library. I also say that he produces not a parts, but jewelry. And, and overall, the hardship is that if he doesn't must produce those, he would have to raise prices and he would lose that contract with the government. Plus, he has all, he has many customers, obviously, and they all have historically abused him, so to speak, and pushed him to the way that where he operates at the moment, where he has to must produce those items and because they expect him to compete with China. If he closes the door, what, what, what customer does, they would just go to China to buy items because he manufactures them as the price where actually China does, you know? So overall, the hardship would be the hardship. Now, the hardship is that if he doesn't expand his storage, he may lose that government contract. Government contract, he actually produced the first part last month for the government contract, even though he was in this process for six years to apply for that, for the number. And the first part was left the machine last month and it was all inspected and approved. So that's why he wants to increase that space because he does not have anymore to store parts, the way he needs to store them. And so that's basically the hardship, the hardship, it puts on the line his business and the government contract. And additionally, we would like to, we understand and we were told by the zoning department that his existing building already is not conforming. So if he had to build that building today, he would have to basically build it in different space.
Yeah.
So all he does, right?
The zoning has changed.
Zoning changed, right, right? And it's beautiful building. If, if anybody wants ever to come and look at that price, that shop, his floor looks like here, at the shop, the whole shop is.
We can see that.
Yeah, I can see that on the pitch.
It's completely, so I'm a CPA, Mariana is with me and we are accountants, right? So we have many manufacturing clients. If you go to his shop, his shop, actually floor looks better than the offices. And, and all, he has, everything is heated, everything is, there's AC everywhere. So his employees work like in the condition that you are right now. So he completely does not care about office, he cares about his, his office. It himself looks like a shop really, because he has all these drills on the back of, behind his chair. So overall, he's a hardworking man and he got to the point where he is actually doing job directly to the government, Navy and US Department of Defense. So therefore, and all he wants to do, he actually wants to exist and extend the existing storage all along the building on the back. There's nothing on the back, there's just woods, I think it's property, town property and some wetlands, right? So there's nothing on the back, so there should, the neighbors will not be upset because they will not even see it. The only person who can see addition is the neighbor on the one side, he's not here today, but there is some, another manufacturing facility who, that exists. And so technically, and he will make it. And uh, so technically, and he will make it as pretty as you guys require. Uh, he keeps his, uh, the way he keeps his uh floor in the shop, uh, he keeps his entire property. It's always cut. Uh, I always asked him about landscaping bills and he says, no, it has to look nice. So um, uh, if we have to, uh, if we uh need to, we can tell him to uh put extra nicer windows and nicer siding, he will do that. But he absolutely needs that storage space to keep up with the requirements of the requirement of US government. Of what he would do, actually, yeah, he would just extend the existing, like, extend the existing uh addition that was built before he bought it. And uh, kind of like corner it off.
Okay, we understand that.
Fortunately, it creates many zoning issues, right?
We understand. Thank you. Christine, what's your question?
About the zoning hardship. I think that was answered.
Okay, but you were just asking me about. Because of the lot, the way it is now compared to what it was when that building was per, put up, the setbacks are the building is actually non-conforming now. It's non-conforming. Correct? Okay, we have any other questions?
No.
No other questions, Tony? I mean, uh, Ryan?
I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good.
Make it quick, please.
I'm not sure if it's gonna help us, but uh, um, overall overall, um, the owner of the building has another six properties, like one, one family houses. And he buys them all and uh in Berlin, only because he likes the town, he likes uh the people, he never had issues, um. And uh, so he pays taxes uh to the town of Berlin where he lives when he sleeps. Um, uh, so again, uh, this is not zoning issues, but I'm just, he's a good citizen. He's just trying to stay in the town and.
We can, we can appreciate that. We see that.
Right, so, um, yes, so and like, like I said, uh, the whole building, if it had to be built today, would have to be moved. Uh, so uh, if we uh, if you uh are kind enough to approve this zoning, so we're not really violating too much because we're already there.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate that. Any others to speak for or against? Seeing no one, a motion to close this portion of the hearing.
Make a motion.
Ryan, a second.
Favor. Aye.
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 Ananamous. Portion of meetings closed. Okay. Okay. Let's reopen. Let's read all this off again. ZBA, ZBA twenty-four dash twelve, twenty twenty-four dash twelve, thirty Robbins Road, map fourteen dash two, block sixty-nine, lot eight. Alexia Esvento requesting a variance of a side yard, two feet or a one-car garage when five feet is required. Or a detached accessory, twelve feet or more from the principal uh structure per zoning. The A ten of R twelve, R fifteen zone. Do we have a motion or any? Anything, and if anybody to say about this uh application? There's two parts of it, I guess, uh, one of them being the.
Option one is to put it two feet to the property line.
But.
Option, option two is five feet to the property line, which then she would need a variance for
Twelve feet from the structure.
From her house.
Hmm. Ryan, Corey, do you have anything?
I have not uh constructed a motion, no. Um, I think.
No, I'm not asking if you have any questions.
Uh, no, I don't have any questions. I think that we should construct the motion, if any, on option two.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Uh, I've got a question for Paul. Have, have you been to the, to the property to, to see like the distance and everything in conjunction, you're?
Yes, I walked the property with the applicant.
Yep.
You mean to comment on?
Yes, please.
Allowed? Not the public hearing.
No, he's not.
No, he's not. Okay.
Not that I know of. Wants to start all that shit that came out earlier.
Oh, gotcha.
So do we have a motion to accept either of these request or applicant, any application?
I'll make a motion to do the um, the second option. Reduce the variance from the house structure.
Nine feet from the structure, the principal structure?
Yes.
But I have a second. I'll make the second that we.
To try to um clarify the motion. It wasn't an original.
The, the mo- the motion is that we accept the application with a nine foot um, nine foot instead of twelve feet from the principal structure. Allowing her a variance of nine feet instead of the twelve feet that's required per the zoning regs.
Detached structures to me.
Detracted, detached structures, yes. Any all for, anybody for the application? Anybody opposed to the application?
Sorry, Lanny, what are you calling for? We have a motion on the table?
We have a motion on the floor.
We have any discussion?
Okay. I thought we've had the discussion already, but go ahead.
Well, discussion about the motion. I, I don't have any. Uh, there, there, the motion uh and seconded uh for.
It's been a mo- motion and seconded. I'm asking if, since we've had plenty of discussion on this already.
Yeah.
Um. Uh, we, do we have a motion to, are we gonna approve this? Or deny? All for the application, for the motion.
Ryan's aye.
White side, aye.
Tubbs, aye.
And this is for option two?
Option two, which gives the, brings the regs to the, the sideline to, to within regulations and.
From the neighbor perspective, I mean, it we're, we're providing them the, the proper distance based on the zoning. So. Aye.
Motion carries. I would like to add something to this, even though I might not, I'm probably not supposed to. I would seriously recommend that you look into the insurance ramifications of this and consider putting it on a slab. Okay. Okay, enter our final. Your excuse is you can leave. Okay, uh. Do we have to do anything? What is ZBA, the one for?
Uh, you can make a decision if you like.
Okay. Let me read it, let me, let me read this first, or try to. Number two, ZBA twenty-four dash, uh, twenty twenty-four dash seventeen. Six fifty-eight Berlin Turnpike, map ten dash four, block eighty-three C, lot fifty-two. John Gomez, Car Guys Automotive LLC is requesting a variance for the side yard setback of ten feet where fifty feet is required. The abutting, when abutting residential district per zoning regulations, VIJ four of the business, uh, BT one zone. The property is owned by Cristalina Vario, Varios.
I believe I can make a motion to deny it without prejudice, right? And they can come back sooner than six months?
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, I, Ryan would like to make a motion to deny this without prejudice.
White side, second.
Do we have any discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Four yeses and I vote no. So it's four, four, four and one against.
To deny them?
To deny without prejudice. It still passes.
Okay.
The motion carries.
Okay.
Okay. And I'll talk.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, number C on the agenda, ZBA twenty-four eighteen, twenty twenty-four dash eighteen, twenty twenty-four dash nineteen, twenty twenty-four dash twenty, forty-six Woodlawn Road, map ten dash two, block eighty-three, lot seventeen A. Kazimir Perzan, represented by Mariana Plilipiv, I'm sorry again for messing it up. Uh, is requesting variance for one, a side yard setback of twenty point two feet for an addition to a commercial storage room. Two, rear yard setback of eight feet for an addition of a commercial storage room. And three, a maximum building coverage of twenty-six point four percent for an addition to a commercial storage room when twenty storage room when twenty-five feet is required and fifty feet, oh, this is, this is where I get to, where twenty-five feet is required.
For a side yard.
Yeah, for a side yard variance, fifty feet for required for a rear yard and twenty-five percent maximum permitted building coverage per town zoning regulations, VIJ in the uh business, uh, the BT one zone.
So Ryan, again, I'll make a motion to approve this application. Now, this is our industrial area. You know, behind this property is those big overhead power lines. I don't see anything being built, especially residential behind it anyway. Uh, the neighbors are all industrial and it's pretty much then the existing footprint in the existing building. It's, it's already nowhere near the setback, so make a motion.
I, I will second it. Any? Any questions, any comments?
No.
No discussion?
No.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously.
Keep making parts.
Keep making parts.
Good luck with everything.
No gifts. We can't accept gifts.
It's candy. You're gonna eat it.
Thank you.
Yeah, it wasn't a bribe before, so it was after the fact. After the fact, they just left it on the pews, so.
Thanks, Cas. I'm not there to have a piece of candy with you.
I'll leave it in the drawer, but I'm sure tomorrow they'll eat it.
Yeah.
I, I'll take a milk. Thanks.
I'll stop by the shop.
Okay, I'll bring it down.
Here, I'm, I'm handing it to him right now.
I don't eat dark chocolate, so you're all set.
Uh, just minutes. Weren't, weren't you here? Yeah, let it go to November.
Yeah, I lost my packet. I don't see it in the drop box. I couldn't read it.
Yeah, we got one more. And December's done.
Thank you. Thank you for your continued uh support in Berlin also.
Thank you so much. I mean, I drive by that building twenty times a day, so. I'll second it.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.